This meeting is now being recorded.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order the March 19th, 2020 Voting Meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The Highland Park, I'm sorry, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth a time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting, or as close as we could get to that. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. And we'll talk a little bit about, in a few minutes, about how public comments will work. Linda, would you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simaristi? Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gallin?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Wizlevich? Mr. Woodward?
Here.
And if I may, I may not be able to tell when someone comes on, so if someone else sees any other board member coming on, please let me know.
Okay.
We'll do it.
I'd like to revisit the issue of muting everybody. Why don't we mute everybody except the person who's talking? Except the person who raises their hand? Is that okay?
Okay.
Just because we're getting a lot of background noise, I think.
Yeah. Can you do that for us, please?
Okay, that'll cut down the background noise. Okay, now we'll have an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please feel free to join us. Where, we have a flag there, Mr. Magziner? All right.
Look at that flag.
It's a beautiful flag. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Join me, guys, here. United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I forgot that by muting everybody, it would make it impossible to hear them. There we go. Okay. Let me get back to my agenda here. So I'm sorry, guys, I'm working with a tiny little monitor because my monitor just blew out, so I may be a little bit slow moving to different parts of the meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. But before we proceed, I'd like to give a brief overview. So I think there's a couple members of the public present with us today. Just an overview of how we'll be running the meeting. So hopefully, we're hoping that anyone is able to, everybody's able to hear us, who's watching or listening via their phones or their computers. If you can't hear us, or you're having other technical troubles, please send us an email to board@hpschools.net. And hopefully, someone will get back to you during the meeting, and we'll try to hook you up. Second, as usual, we will have two public comment sessions. The first one will come after Dr. Taylor gives his report and Mr. Krieger gives his finance report. At that time, if you're here and you'd like to speak, there should be an option on your screen to raise your hand, so please do that. I will call on you, and we'll proceed from there. We'll have another public comment meeting after we vote, same procedure. Finally, if you have a comment at any time and are not able to get through to us on the meeting, please email us at board@hpschools.net, and we will try to get to your message, summarize it out loud, and respond to it. If that doesn't work, we will email you back as soon as possible. Okay, Dr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you. So tonight, I'll be presenting the preliminary budget. This is required of the Board of Education this week. The final budget is going to be presented to the board in early May, and I'll be giving everybody a timetable in just a minute. So let's begin. First of all, I'd like to point out that, as we have done for, I believe, at least four other budgets, this is, I think, our fifth budget engagements process. We met with the stakeholders involved in producing the budget and providing input about the budget. From early January to early February, Linda Hofel and I met with every member of our leadership team separately to go over their budgets line by line, purpose being to understand their reasoning for needing certain expenditures, and also to identify redundancies that Linda and I may notice in other budgets, since we see the big picture that the individual leadership team members don't. The Finance and Facilities Committee, which is currently made up of Darcy Sumaristi, Rob Magziner, chaired by Mark Krieger and Ann Gallin as Board President, met, as you can see, from February through March. Those meetings occurred in the evenings, either in my office or my conference room, with every member of the leadership team who returned to make the same presentation they made to me and Linda, but now to the Finance Committee. So this initial process went through two rounds of vetting. Tonight, we're looking at the budget in its preliminary form. I'll circle back to the budget April 20th, provide you more information at that point, and finally, May 4th is when I'll present the final budget. Now, as I've been mentioning each time I presented the Highland Park forthcoming fiscal year budget, I pointed out that the simplest way to look at a budget, if you're not Mark Krieger, who is really wrapped his head around, you know, my numbers, is to think of it in terms of revenues, what we can bring in, and expenditures, what we have to spend. And unlike some organizations and other government agencies, we, as a school district, have to come in with a balanced budget. We have to have as much revenue as we do expenditure. So I've had for you here, for you to look at, for a minute or so, a breakdown of the proposed expenditures. Now, be mindful that not every expenditure is listed here. This is just a snapshot. You don't necessarily see such things as specifically utilities. We didn't break everything out. But these are among the most costly items, and the ones that can vary from year to year. I'll take questions from board members by raising hands when I'm done. I'll just let us sit on this for another 30 seconds. I mean, I should probably note some of the highlights. You can see that we did save significantly on benefits this year. I know that NJ.com and other news outlets have been talking about the reduced costs, and that's, we're very thankful for that because it means we can do more than we have been able to do in the past. We're still in a bind, and I'll talk about that, but we'd be in a much worse bind had we not reaped some of the benefits of reduced premiums. You can see, of course, salaries going up again. Once again, those last three rows that I highlight are costs for special education. Point out that, again, we are way up in our expenditures in that area, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So each year, we have been spending more and more on providing our students, who we can't accommodate in district, with tuition to be served out of district. And of course, we're responsible for transportation. I'll probably let, I'm sure Mark will follow my presentation by saying a few words, and one thing I would appreciate him sharing is just how detailed and thorough the special education director and supervisor were in breaking down exactly why, the rationale, why every single one of the students we have to place out of district has been placed out of district. The reason being to assure that we are doing whatever we can to keep kids here in our community before we send them out of district. As I've done in the past, too, I'd like to just point out that a very significant part of our budget expenditures are increases in salary. We do have contractual obligations, as we do every year, for natural increases that built into the contract, for which we have to account, and you can see that we had to increase staff somewhat, almost $100,000, to accommodate unanticipated special education needs that came to us this year, like the 2019, 2020 year. This is a snapshot of our revenues as projected. You can see, we got a little more state aid, still very much less than what we are owed. We are anticipating a fund balance of $1 million, and for those in the public who are joining us, fund balance refers to the monies that we can work to not spend as we thought we would have to spend this year, so we can offset the budget needs next year. Having fund balance enables us to maintain staff. Staff tend to be, unfortunately, the big-ticket items we have to shed when we are, you know, in a hole, in the red. But this means, by the way, this fund, $1 million fund balance means is that Linda and I are giving directives to our leadership team to stop spending at a certain point in the year. That's usually about now, three months before the end of the school year, which is not necessarily the easiest thing to do, although I'd be curious to know how the current crisis is going to impact us potentially in a positive way. If there's any positives to come out of this crisis, in that we'll be able to do a more efficient job maintaining fund balance. You can see that we cannot transfer as much as we have from our reserves to help the budget next year, because we have already done that for several years in a row. We've now depleted some of our reserves, and we have to do whatever we can, as I'm sure Mark will point out, what I've done, to replenish those reserves. We're anticipating the same extraordinary aid we've gotten in the past. For those not familiar with extraordinary aid, that's a phrase referring to the additional state funds we receive, usually in July, to help accommodate unanticipated special education needs. But at the rate we're going, the last two to three years, our special ed costs have increased between $1 to $1.5 million a year, far more than the $300,000 that were given in extraordinary aid intended to offset those unanticipated costs. And then you can see the funds we'll draw for taxes. This last, second to last slide indicates exactly how the budget would impact residents like me and the board, and those who've joined us from Highland Park. I'll let you look at that, and then, of course, there are any questions. I'll probably have to have Linda or Mark answer them. You can see the increase for average home is quite low. That, bro, the average increase for average home is influenced somewhat by the variable of taxes that are paid by local businesses, large and small, in Highland Park. We refer to them, at least in my field, as ratables, ratables. So I could let Linda explain further why she believes that we'll have such a low increase for the average home. The last slide that I'll share before I open it up to comments from the Finance Committee, Linda, and their questions, is a reminder to all that every year, for the last several years, we have set up a website. On our main website, it'll be active tonight. That will, actually, I'm sorry, tomorrow, the 20th. Forgive me. That should read Friday, March 20. It'll be active tomorrow, and it's right there in the Board of Ed dropdown option. Click it, and you'll see a section for the 2020-21 budget, including my slides, my PDF version of the slides. So with that, I'm going to be quiet, and I'm going to make sure that the Finance Committee and Linda are unmuted. Anybody?
Yeah, any questions? If you try to raise your hand, we, oh, Michelle, yes, let me unmute you.
Go ahead. I noticed that we have numbers on the, I think it was the second to last slide, about the increase, you know, for individual homes. But I wonder if there's any data or information that we have about how the school taxes increase the value of an individual average home? Because I know that in having conversations with constituents, I guess, the people in the neighborhood, we talk a lot about, you know, how much the taxes are increased for the schools. And I know that we have increases for the town as well, which are a higher rate, surprisingly. So I try to explain why, you know, or how much the value is that that increase indicates. So it's easy to see how many dollars extra we're spending, but it's difficult to see the value of those dollars with the current data that we have in this presentation, because I know that, you know, in a different situation, if we had schools of, you know, lower quality that weren't being maintained the way that we're maintaining them, it would actually cost the average homeowner lots more in terms of valuation on their property. So I wondered if we had any kind of data about that available, or if we could put that together without too much work.
Excuse me, this is Mark. I don't know how to do that exactly. And the reason is, in another time, we weren't capped at 2%, and so you could do some mathematics around 3 and 4 or 5% increases. We're capped at 2%, and then when you take the debt service into account, it's 1.89%. And that's where you get the increase that we're able to raise of about 500, I think it was $589,000. That equates to the $7, because the ratables, it's not only business ratables, it's private home ratables and rental unit ratables. But those ratables in town have gone up, and so because the ratables have gone up, and our tax increase, the school tax increase, which accounts for about 61% of the taxes in town, that gives you a very low number. It's that number, if it turns out to be correct, it's going to be, I think, very close, is only $7. In the year where we increased taxes by $71, there was enough ratables that between the county, the schools, and the borough, and the library, the institutions that tax our residents, the tax bill actually went down that year. This year, with a $7 increase, it's going to be close to the same or no increase. That's the only way I could actually explain it. I don't really know how to explain a differential, as you suggest. Mark?
It's more or less a question of
trying to imagine something that doesn't really exist, you know? I was just trying to think of ways to illustrate the value of the dollars that we spend.
I see. Well, the, I would, see, I personally look at it somewhat the other way. The 2% increase, which is really less than 2%, because it's, in this case, with debt service, it's 1.89%. That number is so low that the, with families moving into town with children with special education needs, and in most years, medical insurance increases going up by 7, 8, 9%, which isn't the case this year, thank goodness. We have been paying down our reserves in order to keep the quality of the education up. One of the reasons that Senator Sweeney and the governor have been talking about even a more serious increase in the, or a serious decrease in the medical insurance premiums, you know, working something out with the insurance companies. The reason for that is we're not the only district in the state where, between typical medical insurance increases, again, we didn't have one this past year, so we have some money, thank goodness, left over, and negotiating with our teachers relatively modest increases in salaries, and the number of families, and this isn't only our district, it's many districts, with the children who have special needs. It's very, very difficult to run the program. And as I said, we've, and then Scott said it, Dr. Taylor said it a few moments ago, we've really cut down on our surpluses. The monies we keep in reserves, the capital reserves, the maintenance reserves, the surplus in case, you know, of some serious problem where we needed to draw some money from a surplus, which the state limits us on that as well, so we don't get to have much of a surplus. But it's been more and more difficult with these numbers to run the kind of programs we're running. And we are running an excellent program. If you look at class sizes, if you look at AP classes, if you look at the quality of the system, it's kept up, but it's been very difficult.
And Linda has had her hand up.
I was, no, I was basically just going to respond that it seems that, and Michelle's question is more of an intrinsic quality of education question rather than a data question.
Right. I don't know how we would monetize that, except by, you know, looking at other communities and seeing.
Well, the value, you can look at how the prices of homes are going up in Highland Park as a result of quality of education.
Right. Chris, did you have your hand up? How do I unmute you?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. So Mark, and you and I talked a little bit about just how the effects of the financial crisis are a little bit unknown right now, and Dr. Taylor mentioned this as well. I was just curious about the capital projects that we have for next year. Are they, how much flexibility is there? Are there, I mean, one thing that educational institutions sometimes do in the kind of situations is maybe defer capital projects. How flexible are those plans?
I'd say they're very flexible. We have some relatively small capital projects. The bulk of the money that's being moved for capital projects out of our capital funds is for a partnership to get the athletic field at the high school redone, which has turned out to be much, much more expensive than we anticipated, but also would draw down our capital reserves to almost nothing. If we find ourselves in a position where the Sweeney bill, what might call the Sweeney bill, to give us further decreases in medical insurance costs by the state mandating that, I think that would be something we would clearly have to defer. If we do get the benefit, and by the way, the teachers will get the benefit, because their contributions will be much lower. So everyone would benefit from this Sweeney and Murphy bill. If that indeed happens, we almost certainly will have enough money to do the athletic field. Otherwise, it's going to have to be put off. It's likely to cost $400,000 or $450,000. And then perhaps the only way to do it would be to be talking about 2021 capital projects and raising money for capital projects through a bond issue.
Mark, do we have any ability to work with the town to reduce our amount or to negotiate with them in some way?
I guess we always do.
I mean.
But we are, our only, the commitment we made was to only pay 25%. The town would pay 25%, and the county would pay 50%. And that's only if the county gives us a grant, which I don't think we know yet we'll even get. But certainly, we could always negotiate that. But that was the way it was done 10 or 12 years ago.
Right, right, okay. Are there other questions about Dr. Taylor's presentation? Yes, Mark?
And this is really for, I guess it could be for Mark, or probably even better for Linda, but between now and May, meaning the time that we adopt the final budget, what kinds of things could change? What are we anticipating, finding out about, that could make changes to this budget?
Well, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we are, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we are anticipating some news from the state regarding changes to health benefits. We could see a significant savings there. There are some personnel changes that I would think that if we found savings with health benefits, that perhaps we could eliminate some of those salary, staffing reductions. So I think a lot of the budget is going to be revisited over the course of the next six weeks.
I'll just add, and then Mark, you can pick up, Rob, that I don't have a problem saying that this current crisis with which we're dealing may actually also have us not spending certain monies on transportation, professional development, substitute teachers. So while it's not money we can count on in the future, God forbid we have another crisis like this, it's certainly, I think, something which we can use and bank on.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Mark, could we have you read the single finance item?
Point of.
Yes, yes, Linda, sorry.
I believe we inserted a public comment that time, right now?
Oh, I thought we would usually, you know how we usually read our committee reports, and then we have the public comment?
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to actually take the vote.
Oh, no, I was going to take the vote. I just, I was going to have Mark, for what it's worth, read letter A. But we could skip that and go to public comment and then do that. I mean, what do you guys prefer?
Why don't we have the public comment first, and then I'll move them, and we can vote immediately after.
That makes sense. Okay, public comment. Let me read my piece. "The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings." All right, I think we have a few members of the public that are possibly in our meeting. Does anybody want to give a public comment? Just go ahead and try to raise your hand on your Zoom dashboard.
Well, that person is waiting to raise hand. I'll tell you that I have not received any emails to the board.
Thank you, Scott. All right. If anybody is trying to raise their hand and it's not working, please send us an email. There will be another public comment period available. Okay, seeing the public comment, Mark, would you please read the finance items and move the item?
Yes, so we have really only one large item under Finance and Facilities. I'll read it in, and I probably won't read all the numbers, but some of the numbers. So number one, Authorization to Submit School District Budget. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the submission of the 2020-21 preliminary proposed budget to the Middlesex County Superintendent of Schools as follows. And then we have three funds with different budget amounts. Sorry, four funds. I'll read the total funds. Anyone have a question there? I'm sorry. Okay, go on. So total all funds is $37,457,584. And the total local tax levy amount is $29,792,736. Then to follow, the maximum travel-related expenditures allotted for the 2020-2021 annual school budget is $94,479.10. The amount allotted for the pre-budget year was $86,358.50. The amount spent to date is $34,132.26. Approval to Withdraw from Capital Reserve. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the withdrawal from Capital Reserve in the total amount of $467,000 for the following projects. Installation of Replacement Boiler at the Highland Park School. District share of cost of athletic complex track resurfacing. Placement. Again, just to repeat, these amounts do not have to be spent. We're just withdrawing them in case we do spend them. And then I move that the Board of Education, approval of withdrawal from Maintenance Reserve. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the withdrawal from Capital Reserve in the total amount of $48,850 for the following projects. in the total amount of $48,850 for the following projects. Before I read these, and Lynda, is it correct Capital Reserve or should that have read Maintenance Reserve?
So first, I wanted to mention that these should be three motions. Okay, where it says approval of withdrawal from Capital Reserve?
Yes.
We're withdrawing $467,000 from Capital Reserve.
That's correct, as written, yes.
Right, and then item number three is approval of withdrawal from Maintenance Reserve, and those are for maintenance projects, as opposed to what we call capital projects because they usually involve going out to bid, or they're large enough that they would.
Lynda, I'm just commenting that the words in the motion say Capital Reserve. They should say Maintenance Reserve. So I'm going to reread that, and then I'll move all three when I move them. I move that the Board of Education, rereading now, accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the withdrawal from Maintenance Reserve, the total amount of $48,850 for the following projects. Concrete repairs district-wide, carpet repairs and replacement district-wide, window balancer replacements at Irving School, replace one set of bleachers at the Highland Park Middle School Gymnasium, waterproof and paint gym, Wallop Bartle School, safety sheathing for windows at entrances to schools, and bathroom urinal partition installation. So I'd like to move items one, two, and three. We have a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Lynda, could we?
Lynda, didn't you just say that we need to move those individually, one at a time?
No, 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 but they have to be noted as.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the second, please?
Chris.
Chris, okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion before we vote? Nope, seeing none, could we have a roll call, please, Lynda?
Ms. Byer? Can you unmute her, please?
I muted myself, yeah.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola? Am I correct that Mr. Rizlevich is not here, correct?
I am here.
Okay, when did you arrive? Because I.
Oh, sorry.
I was here the entire time. I moved by phone.
Okay, but you were not here when I did the roll call? So can you tell me what time you arrived?
I was here for the roll call. I actually, I did say here, but perhaps you weren't able to hear me at that time.
Okay, so.
Sorry about that.
Change that to a present.
I think he was muted at the time.
Okay, and so Mr. Rizlevich, you said yes? Or I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm not, I don't want to read. Okay, Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, okay. Now we'll move on to our second public comment period. "The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings." Let's see, I believe we have a couple of people still on, or maybe one person still on. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand or send us an email immediately. Give that a second. Scott, have we received any emails during the motion?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, seeing no public comment, let me find my agenda. All right, I would like to move that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, see you all on Monday, March 23rd, for a more normal meeting. Chris, was that a raised hand or a wave?
I was a wave. Stay safe, everybody.
Yeah, stay safe, guys. Bye. Have a nice weekend.